Next item, new business. We have this evening a study session regarding El Segundo Vision 2050. The city's effort to update their general plan land use element. Do we have a presentation from the staff on this?
Yes Chair, while everybody's getting set up.
Oh, it's like, wait.
We're already running, dude. Can you get the PowerPoint off? Yeah, can you just get it open for me, please? While the PowerPoint and our consultant team is approaching. Tonight is a, you know, exciting conversation that we've sort of primed the commission leading up to the current study session on the land use element update. We talked about this a bit a few meetings ago when we had sort of the general overview of what is the land use element that Eduardo gave, which was very timely and what is the general plan. We'll continue those presentations, of course, but we are, you know, several months into the land use element update for Vision 2050 itself. And I don't want to steal from some of the content of the presentation, but a lot of effort has already gone into a great deal of research related to the existing conditions, community survey and our community questionnaire, as well as interviews with city stakeholders, city leadership, the technical advisory committee as of last week. So I'm excited that, you know, we're at this phase where we really get to start having very fruitful conversations that will help guide where we go from here. And thankful for Laura joining us today and Diana as the project manager who's not here at the moment, but equally as involved for really getting us to this point where we really sort of rubber starts to hit the road. Or I don't know what that saying is, but something along those lines, right? Is that right? But with that, I'll go ahead and hand it off to Laura and also, you know, the city team including Paul and Agnes and Eduardo and Jasmine and Maria who just left, you know, have been integral parts of staff's participation in this process as well. And the many other members of the TAC, Economic Development, Finance, we even have somebody from HR that's part of the TAC and so Public Works and PD and FIRE. And so this is really an all hands on deck process and you're sort of the first group to vet where we're going and give us further direction. So with that, I'll hand it over to Laura.
Thanks, Michael. For the record, Laura Stetson from MIG. Thank you for being here this evening. I did not check the Dodgers score before coming in. So we'll all wait and see how it works out in the end. This being a big sports community and baseball in particular. I'm really pleased to be able to work with your community on this project because I've worked in El Segundo on projects in the past and every time I come here, I think, everybody who lives here is so lucky. This is such a great little community and we really found that when we went to the community workshop back in August. You feel the love of El Segundo when people come and want to talk to you about it. And so we're, it's just really refreshing to work in a community where people feel so strongly about preserving their community, but recognizing that you need to look forward as well. And where you are today might not be where you are years from now, but it's up to the general plan to set that course and the land use element in particular. And I want to emphasize that the city is just updating the land use element. How many on the commission were involved in the housing element update a couple of years ago?
Probably two or five.
I was like, yeah, the very end.
The general plan includes a lot of different components, including a circulation element. The circulation element is not being updated as part of this, but as you'll see, circulation is so integrally related to how land is used that we're going to talk a little bit about circulation this evening as well. El Segundo last updated the land use element in 1992, I think. And so if you, most communities try to update their general plans every 15 or 20 years or so. So this is probably overdue for a refresh and that's why it's nice to take this real comprehensive look. So tonight, what we'd like to do is to give you background on the work that has been being done for the last six months or so, maybe a little bit longer. What we've learned from the background research, what the public has said through some pretty neat and public engagement activities. And then also present to you some preliminary, a preliminary vision and guiding principles. And we don't have to wordsmith these or not tonight. We're just looking to see if you feel like it's the general direction. So I've got a presentation that goes on for a bit because this seems pretty casual. Michael, we didn't talk about it, but if somebody has a clarifying question, I think we could probably entertain that as we go through the presentation. We're going to focus on, as I said, the existing conditions analysis and engagement. I want to talk about engagement second, but just to give you an overview of what has been done to listen to the community is first it started with community leadership interviews. That was your council and department heads back in May of this year. We had focus groups focused on business owners, developers, the real estate community, education. So a really diverse range. We wanted to make sure that we talked to the people who may not live here, but have a big presence because they're part of the 70,000 people who are working here every day. And then the community workshop on August 13th, we want to share some key takeaways. Lastly, we are going to give you some high level overview of the online questionnaire. And I believe as part of your packet, there was the community engagement summary. So some of this you may have absorbed already, so I won't dwell too much on it. But let's talk about the existing conditions update. A lot of this information is in what we called a story map, which is an online existing conditions report that's interactive. It's not just a static report, so you may have read some of this background information in there as well. What's in there is information about the market analysis that was done by our partner on our team, Kaiser Marshawn Associates. There was a mobility analysis and these two partners, Kaiser Marshawn and then Farron Peers, the traffic engineer, will continue to be involved throughout the program. And work that the MIG team did to outline what the current state of housing is, the community character, some demographics that we'll go over and the things that you see on the screen. This is what the background report is. And this was done to educate the project team, but also to provide the public with a baseline of where El Segundo is today so that you can look forward. It's always important to know where you are so you know where you'd like to go. How many of you had a chance to take a look at the story map yet? Commissioner Christian, a little bit, and it's hard to see on your phone. It's a little too tiny. It's something that you need to do sitting at home in front of your computer. It's just, it's easier to use, but it gives a pretty good picture of existing conditions. This map is an interactive map. If somebody wants to know what their current general plan land use designation is, they can click on it. They can motor around the city and look to see that, blow up, blow back. There is a highlight on the specific plans. In a community of your size, I was surprised to learn that there are 12 specific plans. And what that tells me is that over time, property owners have said, hmm, the plans and the zoning regulations that were set in place many years ago aren't reflective and reactive to what's going on today. And so we want to set our own conditions of how projects move forward. And that's what a specific plan does. It says, despite what the zoning code says, we want to write our own zoning for this. And so you've got Smoky Hollow, you've got downtown, and you've got several big areas on the east side of town that have specific plans. In addition to the specific plans, there are some zoning tools that dictate how property can be used and developed in El Segundo. And these are through overlays. There's a very large overlay called the multimedia overlay district that applies to everything east of PCH. So that really says, hey, we're near Hollywood, come on in, folks. This is an opportunity to do things that you might not be able to do up in the Hollywood area. And there was also a housing overlay that was established as part of the housing element update. There's information about Los Angeles International Airport, LAX, and its impact on the community. We're not expecting anything to change as part of this long range planning effort, but other than the fact that hopefully planes will be quieter and those noise contours you see on that map might not affect the neighborhoods just south of LAX. That's a long-term wishful thinking, maybe, is that some of that noise might abate over time. There's a lot of information, story maps, and a lot of the work that we did investigating housing and what housing conditions are in the community today. You've got about just over 13,000 people living here. You may not know that most, that there are more renters than there are homeowners in El Segundo, 57% renters versus homeowners. And what I'm going to tell you about housing is of no surprise to anybody, it's expensive and it's hard to come by in this community. And over 50% of the households in the community are what are called cost burdened, meaning that they are paying more than 30% of the household income for housing costs, be it mortgage and insurance that goes with it, or your rental and any other things that you're paying as part of that rent. So, and that's a standard that the federal government has set, that 30%. If you're paying more than that, that's considered cost burden. And you can see that there are about 30% of the households that are extremely cost burdened in the community, paying more than 50% of their household income for housing costs. El Segundo is a relatively young community. You see from this slide that the folks between 25 and 64 years of age, that's your working age group of people, is, do the math real fast here, what is it, 61% of the community? What does that tell you? You've probably got people who are living here with children in the schools. But what it also tells you, if you're looking at that 45 to 64 age demographic, is they lose maybe people who are headed towards retirement and might want different housing options and may want to stay in El Segundo. They're living in a home, the children have left, and they might be looking for something a little bit smaller. Are there opportunities in El Segundo for them to stay here or will they continue to live in a, in a home that maybe has one or two more bedrooms than they'd really like to clean every week? That's how I look at, when I look at square footage of a house, my goodness, that's a lot to clean. Some of the analysis that we've done is looking at pollution burden. And this is something that we're required to do. This was done as part of the housing element, is really looking at what portions of the community might be exposed to health conditions that aren't optimum. In El Segundo, it's not much of a concern. If you have a low score for pollution burden, that's a good thing. It means that the city relative to other communities throughout California don't have as much exposure to poor air quality, to noise, to other factors that lead to poor health conditions. And the area that's shown here in yellow is probably likely due to the presence of the Chevron refinery that takes up, as you can see here, one quarter of the city. Let's switch gears and talk about market conditions and what our economist has discovered as part of their research. I know those dots are hard to see, but if you open it up on story map, you can navigate around. And these are the Fortune 500 and the top 20 types of companies that are in El Segundo. That's a pretty darn good presence of Fortune 500 companies and they are well distributed on the east side of the city. It's not a surprise that this is an employment hub that has a long history of aerospace. Also starting to be a real sports hub. I think you just got, what was it, the Sparks team is now looking to build their training center here. 70,000 people in the community every day coming into El Segundo. And the city has a, what's called a very high jobs to housing ratio. Usually most communities, it's under one in El Segundo. It's 2.6 jobs to 0.4 jobs to, so 0.4 residents per jobs, meaning a lot more jobs, not as many people, not as many homes, meaning a lot of people coming in to commute. And when we were doing interviews and focus group discussions with the business community, they said that this is one of the biggest constraints on hiring young people is the inability for people to find places to live that would prevent them from commuting. Younger generations are really embracing alternatives to private automobiles. So they're looking at transit, they're looking at scooters, they're looking at bikes, they're looking at other things that get them to work. And it's tougher to do if you have to come a long way unless you can take the train and hop on your scooter and get to work. But that was a very predominant theme when we talked to the business community. Your market with regard to retail is very healthy, according to the economist. The average retail rents are higher than Los Angeles County on average. And as you can see, it varies across the city. It's $5 per square foot on average, but it's about $4 in downtown, but much higher along the PCH corridor. You've got a lot of eyeballs going up PCH every day. And so I think that probably commands higher rents along the corridor. Office. Everybody knows what's happening to the office market. It was interesting to have the gentleman here just before us this evening putting on hold an office project. They might be interested in following the general plan land use element update to see what might happen on properties east of PCH, but there is just not much of a market for office use anymore. The way people use offices has changed dramatically. There's a much higher demand for funky office space like you see in the Smoky Hollow area as opposed to going into a large corporate office in a high-rise building. I was telling Agnes Ho before the meeting that I came over today a little bit early. I always like to do that and immerse myself in the community, but I was over in one of the co-working spaces on Grand, in fact, just next to the office project that was up here. And that's really, I think, what young folks are looking for is these co-working type spaces that offer much more than going to work in a high-rise every day. So that's seems to be a continuing upward trend in how people are using office space. Industrial, very strong market in El Segundo. You can see that the rents for office, for industrial space are double what they are in Los Angeles County as a whole. There are industrial businesses that, entrepreneurial businesses that may be looking to expand and might be constrained by what they can find in the community because of the high rents and not as much as industrial spaces as they'd like. And so this, the anticipation is, is that this market will continue to remain strong and needs to be reflected in the thinking that goes into the land use element. Same for hotel. And this isn't particular to El Segundo, but just the market region around LAX, still a very strong demand for hotel space, projecting almost doubling over the next 15 years or so. So I guess people like to stay in hotels and go to co-working space. Not to harp on the housing conditions and situation, but I think everybody knows that supply is far outstripped by demand in the community. This graph is showing on the notice that the 600-plus units that are needed in El Segundo, that's the number associated with the housing element and what has been deemed needed to meet the housing demand in El Segundo over a eight-year period that extended from 2021 to 2029. And so part of this land use element update is really to look beyond that 2029 horizon year and see what additional housing growth and demand might be in the community. Let's switch to transportation, mobility, as I mentioned. The transportation element is not being updated, but the traffic engineers and analysts divided the city up into five regions exclusive of the refinery to really see what the different types of circulation conditions are and how that might also influence land use. And so let's walk through these from northeast, south of El Segundo down to Smoky Hollow. Starting with northeast, El Segundo, you've got a lot of office buildings up there. I think Boeing is a major presence up in this area. The area is served by two transit stations for the K-line. Generally bike friendly, but there's a lot of truck traffic. So if you're willing to put up with truck traffic, that's fine. The sidewalks are well connected, but the, there aren't any tree, there's a lack of trees or anything that would make it a really pleasant pedestrian environment. So if you go out during the day, it'd be interesting to see how many people are walking from their office to other places, although it doesn't get too hot in El Segundo, so that's probably not much of a big deal. And I'm going to come back to this, this topic of LTN or local traffic, local travel network, because there is an organization that's looking at ways to make streets safer and slower for pedestrians and bikes citywide. Southeast El Segundo, very similar to northeast, one K-line station, the Douglas Station. Douglas is the only north-south street that goes through this area. So if you squint on your eyes and look at the streets that are there, you can see that there aren't many through connections and it's a constrained area as far as transportation goes. You need to go out to the major arterials in order to get out and around and visit other parts of El Segundo. And biking and walking, they exist, but crossing the freight rail is a challenge if you're a pedestrian. The residential neighborhoods, very pleasant to walk in. Obviously, the only transit service is for bus lines and the bike facilities are mostly on-street bike facilities. There aren't dedicated bike facilities through the neighborhoods. Good sidewalk coverage, so it's easy to walk. And coming back to this idea of this local travel network, the South Bay City's Council of Governments is doing pilot studies to see what could be done to improve walking, to improve biking. And they are looking at five roadway projects within the residential neighborhoods. And Michael, I don't know which ones those are, but.
I don't know.
Not to put you on the spot, but we can come back to you later if you want more information on that. Downtown, a specific plan was recently done for downtown, noting that the walkability of downtown, sometimes there are obstructions, tree damage, lack of amenities. So it, there could be an improved pedestrian environment in downtown and that's probably part of the downtown specific plan to address some of those things and connectivity to the neighborhoods to the north. Smoky Hollow, there are some pilot projects underway now on Smoky Hollow. A specific plan amendment was done about two years ago to relook at land uses in Smoky Hollow. And the directive at that time was no residential in Smoky Hollow. Let's try and continue to get this neat vibe that's going on there now, but fix the parking and fix the circulation. And so there's some pilot studies to create some one-way streets to have different parking arrangements that make on-street parking, increases on-street parking by doing angled parking instead of parallel parking. And also to improve the pedestrian environment with simple things like crosswalks that let people know how to get around a little bit better. So I think we'll probably end up talking quite a bit about Smoky Hollow as part of this update program. High-level summary of the community engagement that has been done. I mentioned that we talked to city leadership through interviews. We had focus groups. We had a community workshop back in August and had about 70 people show up. It was an open house, so it was very interactive. People could come anytime they want. We had about eight or 10 stations. You could go around and talk to a planner. And what people were challenged with was that there are constraints and that there, you have to be able to make compromises when you want things. So we asked people what, for example, was most important to them. They weren't allowed to put dots on a lot of things. They were budgeted with three dots to say, these are the things that are most important to me. So that there was a constraint on how you could vote. But people, I think, had a pretty good time and they even spent a lot of time just putting on post-its of what they'd like to see. And all of this is documented in the engagement summary. Following the open house, that open house was somewhat replicated through an online questionnaire and we had, I don't know if you ever do these types of things, but 800 and, almost 860 responses for a city of this size is a pretty darn good response level. And people, I think, had fun. They provided a lot of good written comments, not just voting on the exercises that were there. And what we heard, if you want to kind of take it to the top level of what was heard through this combined engagement effort, is topmost, preserve El Segundo's small-town character. Don't do anything that would make it different than what it is today in terms of people who know each other, the neighborhoods that are quaint. It's almost a tale of two cities when you look at the west side of PCH versus the east side of PCH, but it seems to be working. But the big question about housing, if you want to keep the neighborhoods quaint and keep the character, yet still provide additional housing, where does that happen and how is it done? The people felt that the diversity of the business community is outstanding. It allows the city to weather different economic cycles because of the different types of businesses that are here. So continue with that flexibility. If there's any growth, as growth happens, make sure that infrastructure is able to support it. That's a given, but people, that was really top of mind for a lot of folks, you know, can water sewer lines, telecommunications facilities, all of those things support the things that the community's looking for. People were very focused on open space, places to gather. They want to make sure that areas are improved. You've got a great central park. You've got a lot of little tiny parks spread out, but what else can you do to create places for people to gather as residents, as business owners, as people who are in the community working here every day? Lastly, because of the type of, the people who were responding during the workshop and at the questionnaire, we were finding that the respondents didn't really represent the demographics of the community as we showed you. They tend, the respondents tended to skew towards ownership and older people. And it's really important, people said, to hear from the entire community. So as we're going through the next round of engagement, do all that we can to engage people who typically don't engage. And I, and in talking to Michael and his staff, they, you guys did a really backup job on getting the word out. It's hard to drag people to things that they don't want to go to, but how can you make it interesting and enticing for people to come to the next round of workshops? We're getting towards the end here and the questions that we want to ask of you. The feedback was varied depending on the audience. The leadership was very focused on fiscal sustainability. The public was focused on housing. The focus groups were focused on flexibility for the business community. But there were, there was overlap. We did hear a lot from the business community about, as I mentioned earlier, housing for people who want to live in El Segundo who can't today. We had a meeting just last week with the technical advisory committee. I think one of the planning commissioners was represented there and they also emphasized extended outreach, places for startups to expand and looking at future open space. So we started to see these themes continue to be repeated. So all of the information that we've heard and learned, we've taken to build into a preliminary vision for the land use element. I won't read it. You've probably looked at it as you perusing the materials today. So the vision is a statement of where El Segundo will be 20, 25, 30 years from today. The vision is supported by guiding principles to guide decision-making and policymaking. And the guiding principles address eight topics, from land use to making sure community voices are heard. These guiding principles reflect what was heard as the common themes, preserving the small-town character, diverse housing, resilient diverse economy, connected reliable transportation, parks, plazas, community facilities, climate resilience, green practices, diversified revenue base for fiscal health, and include all voices in shaping the city's future and engaging the community as the city moves forward in time. So moving ahead, what we're asking the commission to consider and provide input on this evening are key parts of the city that we've defined to be focus areas, starting with all of the area east of Pacific Coast Highway. Then on the west side of PCH, the housing overlay area that's along Imperial Highway, downtown, Smoky Hollow, and some of these housing overlay areas that were established as part of the housing element. And lastly, Smoky Hollow. So what this does is it's looking at areas of the community where change might be possible while preserving the neighborhoods that you see not highlighted in this exhibit. East of PCH, there is a real tension as to whether or not housing should be allowed east of Pacific Coast Highway around the transit stations because of the importance of the business space and because you've got things that are galling on in parts of east of PCH that might not be compatible with a 24-hour resident presence. There aren't services in this area, schools, shops, some shops, but things that people would want to frequent if there were housing on this side. So that's a tension that we saw coming up. And there is a, something that the state legislature has moved on to the governor's desk called SB 79, which may take out of jurisdictions' hands if the governor signs it, he's got three more days, I think, that would mandate residential and higher density uses around high-frequency transit stations. And that would include the K-line stations that you have here. And I don't want to talk too much about SB 79 because it hasn't been signed yet, but it's something to. signed yet, but it's something to anticipate that there may be something that you're going to have to grapple with as part of this, and we'll talk about it three days hence. There are development proposals along Pacific Coast Highway and El Segundo Boulevard, and what changes might there be desired along these corridors of the city? There's a housing development that's being processed. Is it a specific plan, Michael, or just, no? Okay. It's a, what? Part of the overlay, a housing, is it mixed-use? Yeah, a mixed-use development. So are there opportunities along PCH to do similar things? Smoky Hollow, when we were, before the planning commission, what was it, two and a half or three years ago on this amendment, somebody, some of the planning commissioners at that time asked, including the current councilperson, could there be housing in Smoky Hollow? We said, that's a discussion for the land use element, because we were just trying to do some minor updates to the specific plan at that time. So the question is before the community this evening, is there desire? Is it appropriate? What are the considerations for some form of housing in the Smoky Hollow district? Downtown, and my, even though this specific plan has been recently adopted, is there any rethink that wants to be done for downtown? And maybe it's not throughout downtown, maybe it's just in the Civic Center Plaza area or other specific locations. The housing overlay, are the, as part of the housing element, these areas weren't rezoned, per se. They were just identified as opportunity sites for higher-density housing. The question is, for this land use element, does the city want to make a stronger commitment for higher-density housing in some of these overlay areas as part of the land use element? And so, the questions that we have for you tonight, I know that was a lot to listen to, and we can back up and go to any slides you'd like to. Foremost, do the vision and guiding principles reflect the information that we've presented, that we've heard from the public and from the technical analysis that has been done? Are the focus areas, the right focus areas, are some that should be taken off the table, or are there other focus areas that should be considered? And so, overall, what other opportunities or challenges should we explore further as we're working on land use alternatives? And I say land use alternatives because that is the next step in the process, is to look at focus areas and put forward some options for the community to consider based on the feedback from the commission and the council and the input that we've had to date. We're taking the same presentation to the council on the 21st, about a week and a half time here, and that will officially launch this Phase Two, where we'll go back out to the public with the alternatives. We'll come back to you to let you know what the public has said, go to the city council, and once a preferred alternative is selected, the land use element will be written around that preferred alternative, which doesn't mean that there isn't opportunity for other tweaks to it. That's what the public hearing process will be about, but we have to get to something for the public to weigh in on. I'm going to take a breath and turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Very informative. You mentioned it in one of your slides. I believe that you said that currently, we have approximately 57% of population rent versus 43 that own.
Correct.
Do you know how was 10, 15 years ago?
I don't, but we could go back and look. I don't have that information in front of me.
And then you also were talking about the schools on the east side. The east side will be part of Wiseburn, right? Wiseburn School District?
It is, yeah, right. It is a different school district. That is correct.
Okay.
Commissioners?
I mean, that stuck out to me too, Mario, because I think that's the problem a lot of residents have, you know? I think they're just afraid that putting housing on the east side takes away the charm, and then you have the issue of people that would live over there would go to Wiseburn, or are they trying to petition into our schools? And then, I know with the businesses, the taxes and things like that go to the Wiseburn School District, so I imagine with housing, the same thing would occur. So the city of El Segundo would be, in a weird way, giving money to Wiseburn School District through taxes and things like that. So I think that's a big concern for people. And then you mentioned Smoky Hollow, living there. So I don't know this because I haven't really asked anybody specifically, but based on that, I would think people would be more inclined, because we already have some apartments that are Smoky Hollow adjacent. So I think this is just me talking, but that's something that you could try and narrow down with future residents. I just know there's a real anti-eastside housing, but this Senate bill, I mean, who knows? It sounds like it might be out of our hands. But that was just my initial thoughts. Like, Mario, is when I heard you say that, I thought people may be more inclined to Smoky Hollow, but do we have the same issues that we have on the east side?
The interface and the interaction of industrial uses, and you've got a wide range of uses that go on in Smoky Hollow, making popcorn, to people who used, I don't think they're there anymore, but doing research for rocket science.
Yeah, like, do you want to live next door to that? I don't know.
And that's something that would need to be a consideration, as well as proximity to Chevron as well.
Yeah, it's getting closer to that yellow zone. I'm sure, I don't know who did that report that has our town in green like that. I found that the most shocking part of this report.
From the environmental health hazard exposure. Yeah, that's based on data from the state.
Yeah, that's actually published by the Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, and it's based on actual data, which is, you know, air particulate matter that, you know, in their respective area and other data points that they collect.
Do they collect, like, incidents of cancer, anything like that?
They collect cancer, asthma, high blood, diabetes. There are a lot of, they're looking at the health outcomes of people living in these areas. I will tell you that I've worked in a lot of communities, and you see a much higher impact in disadvantaged communities, lower-income communities because of the lack of access to healthcare. So I think it's very income-related as well. Hold on, I want to get to our questions. There we go. So, open discussion.
What was the, kind of, the input from the community about housing east of PCH? I'm assuming, was it a mixed bag, or was it very anti?
I was going to have to think, like, some of the stickers where they put up on that study session of the community, and it looked like it's kind of a mixed bag of half and half, but.
I think mixed bag is an interesting way of describing it. And people did ask us questions about the school district. They were cognizant that it is a different school district. And people asked, well, gee, if they're coming into the El Segundo School District, is there impact? And in talking to school district representatives, they said they, right now, have about 25% of the school population is actually transfer students, people who don't live here. So they have capacity for more students. It's just that people who are looking for out-of-district transfers wouldn't be able to utilize that to such a great degree any longer.
I think there's big tax implications, because.
Well, yeah, because they'd be El Segundo residents.
Well, the resident asset, basically, business taxes, which are heavier than residential property taxes, go away. And I think property taxes go to the county, not to the city.
But there's portions that, like, are props and are the Measure ES and things like that that go into our schools that I think would go to Wiseburn School. So now you have an El, I think this is the problem, is you have, you technically live in the city of El Segundo, so that is going to impact our schools. And I know our schools make money from the permit students that come in. If we're at 25%, now we're going to have a chunk, we're not going to get that money, because now we're going to have to give it to residents, and then we're going to be losing potential money in taxes that are going to go to Wiseburn. And when we pass these things like Measure ES, and those residents aren't going to pay into that. They'll pay into whatever Wiseburn has going on. It's complicated. You know, I wish there, I don't, I mean, we don't want to get into a historic, how this ended up happening, that Wiseburn gets that money. This is ugly. But, short-sighted, certainly short-sighted, whoever made those decisions back in the day. So I don't know about redistricting. I'm sure Wiseburn would never give that up, so I don't know. It is what it is, and it might be out of our hands.
I think for me, and I don't know who we make this request of, I feel like there's a lack of understanding of how those streams of taxes work between the residential property taxes and business license taxes and, like, all the other streams of income and, like, where they would go. I would like to understand that better. I know, I think we speculate on it a lot. Like, I think the one thing we seem to understand pretty comprehensively is that, you know, the school district money goes to Wiseburn, but what happens to the business money that's over there? Does that all come to us? And then when we're talking about changing the mix of business to residential, like, what does that look like? It would be interesting to sort of have our arms around that piece a little bit more, because I doubt most of the residents who are on one side or the other are thinking of it deeply. They just know that we need more housing, and it looks like there should be a place for housing somewhere else, and so why don't we put it there? And if there are cons to that, it would be good for us as leadership to kind of be able to talk to that a little bit better and not speculate as much.
My notes then say you're really interested in the financial implications of allowing housing east of, in a very large sense. Would it do the city's bottom line largely?
Yeah, I mean, even just directionally. Like, I don't need, you know, someone to break out a pencil and try to come with dollars, but just, like, directionally, like, the money from, you know, schools over here, go this direction. The money for schools over here, go this direction. Business license comes this way, or goes the other way, or it's split, I don't even know. Like, so even just directionally.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I can tell you that business license taxes come to the city.
For the, over there, east of PCH?
Yeah, so that's citywide. That's administered by the city, and that's 100% city revenue. Property taxes would go to the state, and then the city gets a portion of it.
Portion.
But, this city would get it, as opposed to? Yeah, yeah, because it's still, it's still within the city jurisdiction, even if, you know, right now, we don't allow housing on east of, all of it.
But if we did, would that change?
No, 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 because it's still within the city's jurisdiction. Yeah.
The one thing that Wiseburn would get is when a developer is building, they're required to pay school fees to the school district where the development is located, but that's a one-time payment. It's a development impact fee to the schools. Some of the key questions that I'd like to tease out of the commission are back to these focus areas, and whether these seem to be, look to, I'll go back to them on this slide, whether these seem to be areas to investigate potential change, and if so, what those options might be.
On the housing overlay area, I'm a little, not confused, but I guess a little more interested in that and in the density of that. There seems to be an opportunity where more housing could happen, where it's still west of PCH. Something to know more about the housing overlay and what that means, density, what it is now, what it could be, what other cities are doing. I'm just curious what that could be, and have a little more information on it.
Let me get to that slide. So currently, and I'm just going to go off the top of my head here on what current densities are. My guess is you don't have much development that's over 30 units per acre, and also going to, just because the staff.
There's probably a very small universe of properties that were developed before these densities. I'm looking at Eduardo and Paul to confirm, and Jasmine, but there might be a handful that are over the 30 units per acre, but not many.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is it? Do you have a better, more context on that?
For the record.
Thank you, Paul.
The density permitted in our multifamily residential zones back in the 40s and 50s was maybe two to three times what the density is today. So if you just take as an example that short strip of properties just west of PCH that's highlighted in green, the average density on the properties there is about 40 to 44 units per acre, just on those properties, because they were developed back in the 50s and 60s and 70s. And the city, from the 40s and 50s, gradually reduced the density numbers for residential, and actually reduced the height limits to approximately 27 units per acre. And then only recently, with the adoption of the new housing element, did we increase that density from 27 to 30 units per acre. So I hope that helps give you a little more context. So the same development pattern occurs throughout the city, so a lot of properties are actually developed above that 27 to 30 unit per acre in the city. So there's still some opportunities to infill at the 30 units per acre, but not a lot.
Thank you, Paul. And what the housing element looked at to achieve this mandate that the state gave of creating additional capacity for up to about 600 units, that's what these overlays do. It would increase density in specific areas. And the question is, and those are things that you have to continue to move forward with, because your housing element, unlike the rest of your general plan, has to get approved by the state, certified by the state. And if you're going to do anything to change it, you put yourself at risk of being decertified, which has a lot of implications. And so, not that housing, housing, housing is the driving force between, for this land use element update, but it is really a critical question of what is the city's position on housing future El Segundans, and where, and what types of housing?
And just to expand on that as well, even though the land use element is not housing, 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 there's so many other complex components to it, but this is a fantastic tool for us to pave sort of a path for us as we go into the next housing element cycle in 2029. If history is any indicator, legislation will be passed over the next four or five years that ramp up the state's efforts for cities to facilitate housing production. So the overlay zones that you see, which not all of them were adopted, we cherry-picked a few locations in order to satisfy HCD in the moment, but a broader strategy was taken to identify additional areas as time passes, and we need to pull additional properties or locations to rezone into that overlay to satisfy HCD up until 2029 and subsequent to when we do our next housing element. And so this is a really great opportunity for us to start to pave that path of if and when we have to ramp up the city's efforts in satisfying HCD and facilitating housing production, or at least facilitating the opportunity for housing production. This was the framework of where we left off at the housing element, to give us room. We did not change those zones because we wanted to keep them available in the future, when and if needed, but we now need to sort of take that next step. And in addition to this, how much further can we go, or do we go, and where do we go? And so there'll be a lot of other focus, but I think to Laura's point, it's a good opportunity for us to also really create that framework for housing moving forward over the next 20, 25 years.
And I think the direction we'd like from the commission this evening, because I know that it was a lot to absorb, is maybe some guidance on what to look at for the alternatives. How closely do we look at housing on the east side of PCH? Should we be looking at Smoky Hollow? Are the focus areas that Michael just referenced things that we should really look at in greater detail and expand the ability? Are there areas along Pacific Coast Highway that could support higher-density housing?
Yeah, I would think looking along the corridors. I think Smoky Hollow, housing is an interesting aspect, and getting more input on that. I'm something a lot of people know that that is a possibility, and that might help alleviate some of that tension about housing going east of PCH, and also help serve, you know, the housing requirements at the state. and also help serve, you know, the housing requirements that the state, you know, mandated sometime. Um, and then, yeah, then I think also looking at the density of the, like I said, the housing overlay, I know Paul mentioned that might not be much, but maybe looking at that, some of those densities, I think we were, we, we should focus at from, at least a housing standpoint.
What about, um, like, hearing the gentleman talking about the offices, is there, and this is just brainstorming, I don't know. Um, turning, I, I'm assuming there's a lot of unused office space within these giant high rises, like, I'm envisioning twenty-five years from now, and I don't know how it works, I'm not in a construction person, but I, I mean, there's really no use for those big giant offices like that, are they gonna end up being either torn down or reconverted into housing?
We had the lengthy discussions with property owners, um, and developers on, and what I'm gonna tell you is probably gonna surprise you, they said it is more economically, uh, feasible to tear them down and to build housing than it would be to convert those because of the building codes, um, are so different and, um, the, the age of the structures, you've got parking, big parking structures going with them, and they said, you know, it's really tough to convert those to, to residential.
Envision that happening, the, the tearing down of office buildings and building housing, cuz that's what I'm, I just.
Nobody showed their hand.
I feel like it's gonna be like Handmaid's Tale or something down the road where there's just all these abandoned offices. You know what I mean? Because no one goes into the office anymore and it's gonna be ugly, so I don't. I know, then to, but, I know.
I, I think, I mean.
I'm just trying to think outside the box.
Anecdotally, staff has received several calls over the years about housing on, and, you know, on many of those sites. Um, it's not currently zoned for that, and so there's not much of a conversation that can uh, go beyond explanation of the current zoning and then explanation of the process if they wanted to try to change that, come to the commission, go to council, et cetera. And I think as, as Laura mentioned, um, conversion of existing, they're not interested in conversion of existing, I think people would love to do it because it sounds sounds nice to be able to convert in, in existing space, uh, sounds like it would be cheaper, but it never ends up being cheaper or easier. Um, and I, the developers that I've spoken to that have done it have vowed to never do it again. But we certainly have gotten phone calls about that, and I also, this is not a office or residential conversation, there's a universe of, of so many other uses that we can, you know, also explore. Um, you know, in Smokey Hollow and east of PCH, uh, that also are, are worth talking about, if, if they are gonna demolish the building, what do we want there? What are the results that we want to see? What's the environment that we wanna create? You know, what, what does that look like for us if they were to demolish those office buildings, so it doesn't turn into Handmaid's Tale?
And so I guess to answer your question, is that something worth exploring, rezoning those areas? Um, for housing? And attracting developers? I don't know, question mark, twenty-five year plan.
We catch up with my notes just a minute here.
Sure, sure. I'm just gonna talk amongst ourselves, is there anything else, like, that we think is missing from this plan? Like, I liked what she said about the downtown, cuz there are some chunks of downtown that are less desirable to hang out and then, you know, to, even at the art walk, although, you know, it's, it's like, you wanna go to one thing down at this end of Main Street, you're like, have to walk by a bunch of nothing really happening. And then one thing I, I've been noticing in other cities I go to, and I don't know if this is part of it, is just a lot of the lighting, the year-round lighting is a lot better than, than what we have going on. That's more aesthetic, so that's probably part of your downtown plan, I wasn't on the commission at the time, but so to answer her question, I think you're, at least for the downtown area, that, that's a good question to ask. But is there anything missing that, that they're overlooking? I can't really think of anything offhand, but that doesn't.
I'll, I'll be curious to, to know the sentiment, the feeling about housing on, uh, Smokey Hollow, just to, just to know what people think about it was.
I mean, also, maybe this is something that Paul and Eduardo can provide additional, actually, you were here when the, you did the original Smokey Hollow specific plan as well. Um, but that conversation did come up during the original Smokey Hollow specific plan. Um, and so maybe there's some history that can shed some light on the intent of where they landed.
Um, I, my recollection is, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn here, is that there, there was concern about the proximity, um, to Chevron.
I mean, it's the one yellow spot, right? The one, the one yellow spot on the environmental map is like right there.
Yeah, but you're on the other side of Manhattan Beach, there's houses, another houses right across the street from Chevron on the side of Rosecrans.
And somehow theirs are green, right? I don't know, I don't know if it's because of the way Chevron is like laid out or what, on, in, on its interior, but it's, I, I found that interesting as well, like, our whole, like, a huge portion of our city is yellow right next to Chevron, but on the other side of Rosecrans, which is also next to Chevron, it's like all green, and so it's like, all right, well, so, that would be my initial concern is, you know, how do we balance that part of it when we talk about desirability of housing? We're concerned about desirability east of PCH. Should we also still be concerned in a similar way about more housing in Smokey Hollow?
If I may, uh, just, uh, kinda help refresh people's memories on the specific plan, at the time, there were, there were conversations about housing. However, the specific plan was initiated specifically because we saw this trend uh, towards sort of creative office, uh, tech businesses coming in to start sort of doing some R and D and things of that sort. And, uh, people were not sure whether housing fit into that picture, that vision of, uh, Smokey Hollow being this tech hub, you know, where new companies are coming in and developing new technologies and so forth. Some of the discussions kind of, um, centered around, well, if we do permit housing, is there a way to add housing to Smokey Hollow without taking away from that goal of attracting these new, uh, startup businesses? You know, mixed use or things of that sort. That was kind of the, where the conversation went, but in the end, um, the city didn't, decided not to pursue housing in Smokey Hollow and put it off. Uh, the housing element cycle was coming, so we thought, okay, well, maybe we'll have a, a discussion about that during the housing element cycle and discussion. And then when we're doing the housing element, we ended up postponing it.
Right.
The land use element discussion was coming up. So that's kind of where the conversations went, it was postponed. There wasn't like very strong feeling that, oh no, we gotta flood Smokey Hollow with housing. Um, there was just kind of, people were just wondering, is there a way to add it without detracting from the main character of the district?
Yeah, and, and if I may also, I think, I think there's always been kind of this, this renewed interest in, in exploring housing and what type of housing. Um, cuz if we look at it right now, the only real, you know, housing that is allowed in Smokey Hollow are care, caretaker units, which are very limited in size and scope and, and quantity. Um, there was some renewed interest, uh, by, by our then commissioner, now council member uh, about exploring that, and I think to what Michael had indicated, it's kept getting punted off. But I think, yeah, we are, we are now in this, in this situation where we could, you know, look at that in a little more in, in depth, uh, such as what Paul was saying, in, in a variety of forms. Um, and, you know, I think to, to add to this too is, you know, what are these other corridors that could potentially be ripe for this type of either mixed use residential? Um, you know, I think, I think, uh, you know, there, there's, there could be appetite to explore that, I mean, if you look at some of these key corridors along PCH, um, um, in El Segundo, but all that to say, I mean, now, I mean, we're at this point now, we're I mean, the, the rubber needs to hit the road in terms of whether we move forward with directing our consultant to really explore that or not.
I, I just don't know how you can keep avoiding it cuz we're under, we, we need housing. And it's, we only have so many areas, I don't know. I don't, I personally, I, I, it's hard for me to envision it. And, and it's not very green or perhaps family-friendly, but maybe there are like younger people, which we know rent in this area, maybe like that remember that, that thing with the six houses kind of near the top and it was gonna be retail on the bottom on the corner of Holly and Richmond? Like, I'm envisioning things like that, like businesses on the bottom with maybe residential on the top, but then you're only getting six residences, is that really solving a problem? I don't know, and it doesn't sound like it.
And I'm, I'm gonna I'm gonna get God at over this, I promise, but to me, unless we're talking about significantly increasing density in some of these other areas that are not in Smokey Hollow, I don't know how we avoid housing east of PCH and get a significant number of units. I do not see it. Um, which is why for me, like, really understanding what the economic benefits or losses are when we look, if we, if there is potential for housing there, there's just not a lot of other places for there to be significant increases in units, and there's and I don't know if we even care about the, the mix between renters and owners, I don't know how, if we care and to what extent, cuz some of the stuff we're talking about, like, if it's mixed use, retail with housing above it, are those gonna be rentals? Do we care if they're renters? I don't know, um. Yeah.
It's just, it's just not enough.
It's not enough, it's not enough, like, I don't know. Yeah, I, I, I have a similar that's what I see, I see a bunch of open space where maybe there's a place to put, you know, some higher density housing east of PCH, but then you know, what do we lose if we, you know, what does the city lose if we do that? Um, in terms of the business, the business income that would have to be sacrificed to be able to do it. But I don't know that we're gonna get it in a twenty-five year plan, I don't know how, I don't know how we get it without going over there.
Well, keep, keep in mind, just has to paint the vision, you know, and then, and then this, the strategy is there for us, and then over the next twenty-five years, we execute as need arises. And so even if, if it's a discussion about where things are prioritized first, you know, to address a need, and then where do we go from there to expand out? Um, it's just paving a road for us over the next twenty-five years, none of this is gonna happen tomorrow, right? And if we rezoned tonight, there's not gonna magically pop up some six hundred unit complex uh, where the Boeing building was, you know, that, that stuff happens over time, um, and there's a lot of things that need to go into that before we ever get there, but the conversation, uh, about how we get there is what's important, cuz that's how we will strategize the land use element, is it'll pave that road for us over the next twenty-five years of, of how we get there. There's also not just one silver bullet to solve the problem, right? There's going to be many different ways that we have to tackle, um, what this has been identified as, as a problem, and it was, and part of it is just strategizing, what are those different ways that we can tackle it? And if we can control lo, or maintain local control, how, how do we wanna do that? Um, and if the state forces other legislation like these SB seventy-nine around expo stations or the, um, the light rail stations, then we tackle when, when that, when that comes and we, you know, decide what kind of local control do we wanna exercise at that point, but really it's about identifying what the priorities are. Um, and it sounds like a valuable piece of information, not even specifically just related to housing, but just in general, is the financial implications for a, a lot of these decisions, regardless of the land use that we look at. And so I think that's an important piece, especially for, as we start the economic analysis, uh, moving forward with the, with the team is bringing that variable back and that, so maybe a high level, obviously maybe not pen and paper, but a high level explanation of where the money flows, um, in addition to some of the feedback during the TAC, I think that uh, Christina had on, uh, it was on the tip of my tongue, but there was other feedback that we got back, uh, and it's good timing, I, I think it was the the inflex point of when startup companies grow out of their smaller shell in Smokey Hollow, and so knowing this feedback now is good timing for us to be able to prompt the economic analysts that will be started to do their analysis, so that we have that information for you the next time we come back.
Yeah, that, that's a good point, cuz that was a, that was a big, that was a big talking, talking point at the, at that committee meeting was this desire to have, you know, startups sort of begin in their incubation stage in Smokey Hollow. And then when they reach sort of a, 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 a certain stage, I think people talked about like series B, series C type growth sizes to then be able to pop them over into somewhere east of PCH for them to go, you know, to take the next, you know, sort of industrialization of their big plan. But again, we're talking about intersecting with housing, like, there's only, you know, every startup in Smokey Hollow isn't gonna then get a giant manufacturing space east of PCH for them to grow, and some of them are gonna grow up and leave, but what do we want to envision in terms of how much do we wanna allocate? Um, for some percentage of those startups to be able to grow and not have to leave the city? But again, if, if we're talking about local control for the housing and being forced to do stuff, do we wanna be forced to do it in Smokey Hollow or in one of these other overlays or some other part of the city, or do we wanna be prepared to accommodate it east of PCH where we might have more choices, um, than we would if we say no upfront in our vision for the city?
And I, cuz I'm so interested in kind of the flexibility of Smokey Hollow and the corridors of, I mean, that's where some of the focus should be at.
Okay, and I'm here from Commissioner McCaberty also to, to look at downtown. Is that what I understood?
I mean, I didn't necessarily, not for housing, but in your overall, the, the, the focus, I think downtown is a little bit disjointed.
Okay. It's something that I wanted to observe, and I keep coming back to this uh, extension that was before you this evening, you know, ima- imagine that um, situation, not where they are east of PCH, but if they were on the west side of the city someplace. And I thought, that's creative, to not tear down a building, but to look at reuse of the space that you have on that site. You know, they wanted to put in more office, but might that be something else without losing something that's on the site today? Could you augment it? And I've seen this happen in other communities, um, shopping centers where they've got acres and acres of surface parking and have repurposed part of that for housing and have built parking structures to, to create the need for parking associated with, with the center, or the fact that because of the way retail's headed, you know, do you need that much retail? It seems to be pretty healthy in El Segundo, but just this idea of repurposing land that might not be, be able to use to its, or is not being used to its full potential today is, is another option.
Like where?
I mean, I, I know, there's actually been some analysis of this in town, um, in Smokey Hollow, but, but east of PCH, you know, think about the the parking lots that Boeing has or the eighteen, well, those are parking garages at AT&T, but Boeing has an ocean of flat surface parking lot, right? Um, I don't know where else does right now off the top of my head, but that's where the analysis, or the, uh, study was done.
There's a couple other, um, properties like along El Segu, um, El Segundo across from, uh, Charter's Commons, and kind of large, large parking, surface parking.
There's.
Right.
Acres and acres of parking and land, they can be sold off piece by piece.
So that, those are scenarios where you're not necessarily subbing out, you know, it's sort of a both and scenario. Um, you still have to factor in the cost of services that the housing generates, which otherwise isn't generated with a parking lot, um, and how that is offset. Um, and historically, the numbers that we've seen do not show that it has an immediate positive, just centrally located on that, or centrally focused on the analysis on that site. It costs more than it provides, just on a square footage basis, but it doesn't factor in sort of the ancillary benefits of generating foot traffic for neighborhood shops and all those other sort of other benefits that come out of having sort of symbiotic uses in, together, um, but it does require that analysis, you can have both and, but you really need to understand what is the cost on services and, and, or demand on services.
And, and maybe some of it's political too. And and maybe some of it's political too, right? So if we wanna, if the, if the price we are willing to pay to maintain local control over our housing development is we're gonna have to like make a sacrifice to like put housing in places that may not necessarily, because if we're forced to do it, what are we gonna do?
Right.
We're gonna tell them, we're gonna tell them no, we're gonna tell the government, the governor no, whoever that governor will be, we're just not gonna do it. I mean, so maybe the idea is to be flexible enough in those, in some of those corridors, like that El Segundo corridor, for example, where Raytheon or whoever has undeveloped or not fully developed. Maybe those are places where we can say, well, maybe someone can put a small, like 360-type complex in a place like that, and we get some units out of it, and that holds off the day when the state says you're not building enough housing. We have something we can come back with. And that might be a consideration that would counterbalance the, it doesn't fully pencil out on day one.
SB 79, if it does pass, we're gonna be kind of, we're gonna be forced to address the land use on, you know, transistors, right?
Yeah, well, I mean, we could ignore it, but.
At great peril.
Yeah. But what that would do would, there's, there's three, well, there's four stations that impact the city. There are three stations that are within our jurisdiction. But there are four stations that would have a quarter-mile radius that touch our our city and anywhere that is not zoned industrial, so it's commercial essentially, or non-industrial zone properties, would be permitted to build housing, and I can't remember the density off the top of my head, I want to say 60?
The height and the density vary depending on how far away you get from the station.
Somewhere to be like 60 to 90 units of the acre, I think, but don't quote me, I'll look it up real quick. And so there are certainly areas in the city that would fall into that category around those three stations and even the fourth station, which is right in the Del Air neighborhood. There is some flexibility that the state allows in order to to give the city local control. They're so generous to allow us to can, to dictate where we load that density. So, for example, if we identified one of the stations as a TOD, a transportation-oriented development, and we want to take it the equivalent density that would otherwise be allowed at the other two stations, we could develop our own TOD and shift all that density to that one station. Still has to be reviewed and approved by HCD, but if we wanted to maintain local control and have some say in the matter, that would be one way that they've carved out our ability to do so in that legislation if if it's signed. I don't know off the top of my head if there's any, you know, station that makes more sense over another right now, but I think that's something to keep in the back of our heads, because if it is signed, this is probably a worthwhile moment for us to build that into the land use element, since we're already talking about it, instead of having to go back and sharpen pencils after this whole conversation has already happened. But it's, it's something worth thinking about. Also, for metro-owned properties, whether we like it or not, they will be able to build their own housing and change their own zoning just regardless. So if Metro decided they were going to build a housing project, which they are looking at, they could do so at any one of those three stations, if they owned the property around the station, which they do.
When we, I mean, I don't know if we want to go all the way down this rabbit hole, but to what extent do we, is like, or is it land that's big enough for them to like truly build like a whole bunch of housing?
It's a good question, it is very tough, just the configuration of properties. I mean, we could look at an aerial, but I I would encourage you to look at it later, so we don't go down that rabbit hole. But it is tough, and some of the the quarter-mile takes you into, you know, Northrop or Raytheon, or properties who have, that have historically for 100 years been the industrial properties, are probably not going anywhere anytime soon. But there probably are a few locations, you you'll be able to look at an aerial and kind of see, oh, I could see that happening there, but but it's, it's a small universe.
And if it would be helpful, Mike, we'll go ahead and and map where the metro-owned properties are.
The map that Amy created.
I think Eduardo already has that, I don't know if you can bring it up and turn the meeting, but. We're sending telepathic messages here. But I, we did, you know, staff, staff worked, knowing that this was coming down the pipeline, and this will be helpful contextually, staff worked on with our GIS team to create a map, so we had a better understanding, the implications for us. And so in in a moment, if we can, you know, we'll bring it up. There's, there's two concentric circles, because there's two different metrics depending on the size of your city and and whether your your transportation met the criteria. But the smaller concentric circle is the quarter-mile circle. And any properties that fit into those circles that are not zoned industrial would be permitted to build the the housing that met the criteria that the state has set.
Yeah, because in my mind, I I just, some of those metro stations, I would think that would make for some pretty gnarly housing, like right there. But like, maybe I'm, I'm probably not envisioning them all. I just, I can think of a couple, like off of El Segundo, like near that station over there. I'm just like, I don't know who would live there, but there's probably other places that I'm thinking of.
Other than housing, are there other issues you'd like us to to take to the community to to ask them to weigh in on with regard to land use? This, this isn't your last shot at it. If you think about it at 3:00 AM, text Michael the next morning.
Can you read back at us the notes that you have? Can you read those notes, those, just to?
Yes, the the questions that the commission has asked this evening is renter versus owner. What was the percentage 10 to 15 years ago, so just to look at trends? Are there fewer owners or fewer renters now? How would the Wiseburn School, the Wiseburn School District would benefit from housing on east of PCH? But we need financial implications of housing going in that area. Housing areas to investigate include PCH corridor, Smokey Hollow overlay areas, and I think I'm getting a lukewarm reception to downtown, although the public seem to say, look at downtown. Doesn't hurt to look, okay. Explore, excuse me, let's be, uh, explore rezoning properties along PCH, east of PCH for housing to allow, to go, to go where high rises are today. So maybe an option for housing if somebody wants to, you know, implode a high-rise that's there today. It seems like the opportunity for housing east of PCH is real, but you, if you're trying to make a dent in these large numbers, but all of this needs to be folded into the overall equation. Look for large parking lots, this is a note to myself, look at large parking lots that exist and where they are and who owns them. And then we had a little bit of discussion of SB 79 and how that might affect the direction. And the city's hands may be tied in some regard, but this whole idea that Michael raised of possibly choosing one station for a TOD if SB 79 passes and seeing if you could load all that up where it makes sense, where it's away from the truly industrial uses. Is that a pretty good recap, Mr. Weister? Michael? Okay, it's, it's deep in the network someplace, but it sounds like something you're interested in that that we could get back to you on just as a piece of information. I don't have any precise dates to tell you right now when we're gonna be coming back before you. We will be going to the city council, we'll be letting them know what your comments were this evening, similar presentation, but closing with, and this is what the planning commission asked to consider. And then start in earnest on developing land use alternatives for the the public to consider and go back through this round of talking to leaders in the community in in terms of the the business community and the residents as well, through open houses or ways that we're gonna, very creative ways. We would encourage all of you to use your networks to let people know that this is going on and for them to check out the website for the project, so that they can look at the story map and get up to speed and send comments into city staff, because we are welcoming all comments at all stages of the project. Michael, I'll turn it back over to you.
No, I I think, you know, thank you for the the healthy discussion and and some of the direction. As Laura mentioned, first bite at the apple, so we're still very early on in the process. It will go quickly though, so we'll get to the end of the process and we'll wonder how we got here. But there are several touchpoints with with the commission, with the community, and we'll continue to keep you apprised. Regardless, I'll send the information on SB 79, because I think it's important that you start thinking about it now. And do look at the aerials and see what properties are in those concentric circles to get an idea of what's probably more susceptible to being redeveloped if it does get signed or not. And if it does, do we have the energy to to exercise our local control and dictate where that density goes, and if so, where and how? But thank you again, and thank you Laura and team, you know, Laura's backed by several members at MIG that really help us, and Agnes is here tonight and Paul as well, so thank you, commission.
So the the action for this item is receive and file?
We've, we've gotten some initial feedback, which will help inform us moving forward. You got it?
Yeah, we have it, if you want to just, before you receive a file.
I know we've got, we've got floats that we want to get pictures of, but maybe we could just bring it up really quickly, just to, so you know what you'll be looking at, I can explain it. So the, the three stations are demarcated with the the two blue concentric circles around them. If you were to look at an aerial and zoom in on those, you know, you'll start to see the building forms and and think about what's there and what's the likelihood of those, those things turning over or redeveloping. You can see Raytheon there. Oh, yeah, and here's the density, and that's David reminding me. So in the, the quarter-mile location for for what would be applicable to El Segundo would be a maximum height of 75 to 95 feet, depending on the proximity to the the metro station, and a maximum density of up to 120 units per acre, with a bonus of up to 160 if immediately adjacent to the stop probably. So it's, think about Pacific Coast Commons, I know it's not built, but if you've looked at those, those renderings, a Pacific Coast Commons scale project immediately around those metro stations. So, I mean, for example, looking at the station that's in the Del Air neighborhood, what's the likelihood of 888 Douglas and and those properties are beyond meet and L'Oréal are in Northrop? The likelihood of that flipping anytime soon? I'll leave it up to you to decide, but those are the types of things that, you know, you can, you can think about and where we focus our energy if it does get signed by the governor in a few days. Thank you, Jasmine and Eduardo.
Is that somewhere more readily accessible to us or residents or?
This map or the bill?
That, no, the bill, well, you know, we'll use Google for that, but for for this though? It was hard for you to find, so I was wondering, how do we find it?
We have, we have a, we had a memo that we circulated with the council, so we can just update the memo and circulate it to you all.
Okay.
Just keep in mind that, you know, there's always a chance the governor doesn't sign it, so it might be moot in like four days, but, you know, we can definitely update the memo, if you're okay with that, Michael.
I think for me, it's just, you know, that pressure creates an, uh, a stimulus for it to look at, like, what could we do? Regardless of whether SB 79 passes, if there's opportunities to turn, you know, stuff that's in those areas into housing that would meet those needs that we're talking about in the 25-year plan, then maybe. So I'm just, in general, I want to know. So, yeah, if you can send that out, I would love it, I would read it.
We'll work on that.
So I think this item is a receive and file with your questions that we asked the presenter. Moving into the next item, do we have any unfinished business?